Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the October 24th meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings a little differently. I recently asked the city clerk's office to broaden the scope of those who provide the opening at our city council meetings, who also include leaders who are engaged in our community. Today, I'm very pleased to introduce one such leader. Vicki O'Grady is a Florida licensed mental health counselor, an accomplished workshop presenter, and has been in private practice since 1989 when she moved to central Florida. Ms. O'Grady has traveled widely throughout the US and Israel presenting personal growth workshops and seminars. She's a founder and former president of Personal Power and Prosperity, a personal growth organization. A couple of years ago, Ms. O'Grady started holding up a sign at intersections that said, simply, "You Matter." It came out of her desire to have people know that their lives are important because of who they are, not in some of... Let's see, let me get that right. Their lives are important because some do not... Their lives are important. Aye. Occasionally, we rewind and we edit something out, start over. Got that? Okay, I'm gonna get this right. Oh, there we go. Okay, this is so much easier. It came out of her desire to have people know that their lives are important because some people don't feel that way that their lives are important. Later, she created "You Matter" cards like these that she hands out everywhere she goes. And with everything happening in the world, this message is timely. She recently received a grant to have "You Matter" messages painted outside a downtown business, and there are now a total of five of those paintings, and with "You Matter" and Vicki's logo on them. And one of them was created by our own District 4 Commissioner Patty Sheehan. Thank you, Vicki, for your leadership. You may stand or stay seated, and then Commissioner Ortiz is going to lead us in the pledge.
Oh, thank you. I'm really grateful for this opportunity to be here today. And I'm not a minister, but I hope that my message is a reminder to each of the attendees here today that you matter. Over the past few years, that message has brought much hope, meaning and inspiration into my life. We all long to matter to others, to be heard, to be understood, and respected. And when that does not happen, there's a disconnection from ourselves and others. The passion with which each of the attendees attaches to our personal agendas reflects our hope for a better world. The city of Orlando was recently the most united it had ever been because we all came together to let each other know that we cared about the community and the pain that we were experiencing. It is with that spirit that I pray for our community to continue to be led. You are leaders. Held us up when we couldn't walk, and you gave us the hope that we could heal our community. Each of you matters to me, to all of us here, and to the city of Orlando, and even beyond. You all make such a difference, and I know that this meeting will reflect your passion, compassion, and dedication to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And these are the murals that were painted, and I give Joanne Grant a lot of the credit for those.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Eng.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, how about we consider the minutes from the agenda review in city council meetings. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, that was the October 10th meeting. Second by Commissioner Sheehan, on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, and so the motion carries. We'll go right into awards and presentations, and Commissioner Stewart, I think you're going to introduce the first one.
I am, thank you very much, Mayor. And today is Light Up Orlando, Light Up Rotary to End Polio Now. So it's World Polio Day, and we are recognizing that with the work that Rotary has done. A couple of quick introductions, and Mayor, I'd like to ask you to read. I have a short presentation by one of my close friends, Bill Gates. He's decided to share a few words with us about this. But we have with us a group of Rotarians that are here, led by District Commissioner, I mean, District Governor Dan Semenza. Dan, if you'll stand, just let us recognize you. Pastor for Governor Joe Weber, if you'll stand. And the District 6980 Public Image Chair, Dr. O. Dr. O, please raise your hand. We are so close to ending polio. Started this project almost 30 years ago with an outreach of somebody making the comment that we could do this. And Rotarians around the world have been participating in the world's largest fundraising project over the past 30 years. Raised billions of dollars, saved millions and millions of lives. And I'm honored to be part of that as a Rotarian, honored to have given to part of that. I'll tell you that closely, here's kind of the logo that we use. If everybody will do this real quickly, put your hands up like this, ready? And the answer is, we're that close. We're that close to ending polio. There's only really a handful of polio cases that are confirmed this past year. And with that, I'd like to introduce a quick, short video of Bill Gates. But the Bill Gates Foundation has committed more than a billion dollars to be matched by the money that was raised by the Rotarians around the world to stop this dreaded disease. And so with that, Mayor, I'd like to ask you to read the proclamation.
City of Orlando Proclamation. Whereas Rotary International, founded on February the 23rd, 1905 in Chicago, is the world's first and one of the largest not-for-profit humanitarian service organizations. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas in 1979, Rotary members and delegates of the Philippine Ministry of Health looked on as volunteers administered drops of the oral polio vaccine to children, reducing 350,000 cases a year to 26 confirmed cases to date in 2016. And whereas in 1985, Rotary launched Polio Plus in spearheaded efforts with the World Health Organization, US Centers for Disease Control, and UNICEF to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas through 2018, every dollar Rotary commits to polio eradication will be matched two to one by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, up to $35 million a year. And whereas Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute $8 billion to polio eradication. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do extend greetings and best wishes to all observing, and encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing Rotary International for its 111 years of service to improving the human condition in local communities around the world, and proclaim October 24th, 2016 as Light Up Rotary to End Polio Now Day in the City of Orlando.
Mayor, if we can take a picture. I do want to mention this today, throughout all of Orlando, especially with the Sea Arts Orlando, the Tower of Light, the fountains at City Hall, the Cedar Lebanon, even the Amway Center Spire, and the Orlando Sign over at Camping World Stadium, will all be lit up and red in honor of trying to end this dreaded disease and the work that we've done so far. So with that, Rotarians, if you'll join us up front, thank you.
Why don't you, everybody, stand up and stand behind the group? Don't you guys all stand up behind?
I'm good. I'm good.
Hey, Tweed, how are you? Well done.
I'm good, I'll wait.
Take your green stickers and put them on your back.
I thought I was getting yanked.
You can't be all right if you've done something worthwhile.
I know. They won't let me in.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Commissioners. I have the honor of presenting two very exciting awards to the city of Orlando for your leadership in helping us to be one of the most sustainable cities in the country. Sustainable Florida is a statewide nonprofit organization that advances the vision of sustainability by identifying, supporting, and communicating best practices, those which protect and preserve Florida's environment while building markets for Florida's businesses by enhancing their competitive advantages today. Each year, Sustainable Florida holds their Best Practice Awards and recognizes outstanding sustainability program and policy development across the state of Florida. In 2016, I'm happy to say that the city of Orlando was awarded the Best Practice Award for Partnership Development for our food waste composting programs. This includes both the Backyard Composting Initiatives, Get Dirty, and the Commercial Food Waste Collection Programs that we've been doing to divert food waste away from our landfills. Today, Tim Center, the Executive Director, has driven down from the city of Tallahassee to come and present this award and say a few words. So I'll turn it over quickly to Tim. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And Mayor Dyer, Commissioners, and Chris Castro, you matter because Sustainable Florida thinks you matter, and because I'm going to get one of these cards real quickly and pass out, along with an oral dose of polio vaccine. Tim Center with Sustainable Florida down from Tallahassee, thanks so much for having me, and congratulations to you all, because the Best Practice Awards Program from Sustainable Florida is the state's premier sustainability award. We award categories in different divisions, and we work in a variety of different fields, whether it be land use, wastewater, energy, agriculture, and so forth. We're looking for those folks who have been doing really well by doing good. And your effort to be waste-free by 2040 is met by the composting efforts and your partnership with Waste Management and the Vista Organics Program, and also with other waste haulers as you work with both residential and commercial producers of compostable materials. It's harder in Florida to actually cite a composting landfill than to take care of the regular landfill and waste, which is quite surprising, especially when you can create a third-party certifiable composting material that is phenomenally great for both your local garden and also for any farms and agricultural efforts you've got going on. From our bottom line, it's a triple bottom line. People plan it and profit. You guys have shown how this can improve the quality of life for your residents, it improves the environment, and it economically makes a heck of a lot of sense. So you'll be saving money in the long run. And on those three categories, that's why you're deserving of both being a finalist in the government category for the Best Practice Award, and you are the recipient of this year's 2016 Best Practice Award in partnership. Mayor, Commissioners, congratulations.
I'd like to also invite up Ian Jurgensen, our Program Manager for Solid Waste, as well as Rick Howard. I don't know if Mike Carroll may or may not be here, but please come up to receive this award.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so next up, Green Works isn't just about being environmentally friendly and socially conscious, we're also about making money and receiving money. And this next award, I'm happy to state that the city of Orlando has been awarded $250,000 grant from the United States Department of Agriculture for their Farmers Market Promotion Program with a focus to increase access to local and healthy food options in West Orlando. Thank you to the leadership of Commissioner Hill, to Green Works, and many of the other city programs. We were able to bring together a proposal that essentially is going to provide three wonderful initiatives for our neighborhood residents. The first is to create an urban farming program known as Fleet Farming and expand it into Paramore by creating 10 to 15 new yard farms or micro-urban farms. Secondly, we're going to be working with Orlando City Soccer Club and at their new stadium, creating a new farmers market in Paramore, which will feature foods that are locally grown in the area and throughout Orlando. And thirdly, we're going to be teaching neighborhood residents about nutrition and healthy cooking in partnership with Ebony Nutrition and the University of Florida's IFIS program. We were only one of three awardees in the state of Florida and only one of 13 across the entire country to receive this award, and we are extremely excited to start to focus on providing healthy access to locally grown food in West Orlando and in Paramore. This would not have happened without partnerships. Again, a big reason why we're receiving these statewide awards for partnerships is because of that collaboration. So again, this happened because of Orlando City Soccer, Fleet Farming, Ebony Nutrition, Sustainable Synergies, University of Florida IFIS, Good Food Central Florida, Lift Orlando, and all of the city of Orlando departments, from Solid Waste to Green Works to even the Planning Department. We are extremely excited for providing these resources to District 5, and again, thank you all for the great work and leadership. With that, I'd like to bring up the team. In fact, Kay and Caroline both have just a quick thought to share as part of their participation in this, and then we'll take a quick picture and recognition.
I just want to say how excited we are to be a part of this process. Our foundation's all about health and wellness. We've already been starting our own community gardens. There's one at Rock Lake, Spring Lake, Spring Lake? Yes. And actually, I just came straight here from one that we're putting in at the Boys and Girls Club in Pine Hills. So we're very committed to this, and we're so excited that the new stadium will be used in such a great way. So it's going to be a really good partnership.
Hello, I'm Caroline Tremannix, Program Manager of Fleet Farming in Orlando. And on behalf of Fleet Farming, I'd like to say that we're really honored to bring urban agriculture to our West Orlando through this USDA grant. Not only will this bring a sustainable agricultural program by growing food and not lawns, but it will also bring a lot of community unity through bimonthly swarm rides that will be led by Paramore citizens. So we'd just like to thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. I would like to introduce Elizabeth Roder, Chairman of the Orange County Week of the Family Committee, who will give a brief overview, recognizing the importance of family unity and the meaningful connections that support our families.
Mayor, city council members, this year, Orange County Week of the Family strives to promote, celebrate the family in Orange County. Our mission is to strengthen family relationships through education, wholesome activities, fitness, and community service. This year, we're trying to reach more people and have more families serve together through the Just Serve campaign. And so people can log on to JustServe.org, they can download the app, and it'll show if it's suitable for little children and adults, or if they have to plan ahead, and links so that they can serve as a family rather than having one major Week of the Family service event. This year's theme is "Family: A Team Effort." Strong family teams are vital to strong communities because they work together to accomplish good things. They in turn are able to work with neighbors, community leaders, and others to make a better society. We have an essay contest, and obviously, that goes along with our theme. And Ella Skanacki, one of the Week of the Family essay contest winners in the grade three to five category, said, "A big family of six really has to practice teamwork to keep everything going. In my family, everyone is important. Everyone's opinion counts, everyone's activities are important, and everyone's feelings matter. My parents have taught us to be slow to speak and quick to listen. We all try to let others tell how they're feeling so that we can understand before we respond. Without even one of our team, there would be a big empty space. Remember, T-E-A-M, together everyone achieves more." So please check out weekofthefamily.org. We have several contests that we run besides the essay contest. We have Grandparent of the Year, and we have the Paula Hawkins Award for the Family Champion. And you all will find your invitations on your desk. I believe the clerk passed those out ahead of time. I know Commissioner Hill has joined us in the past, and we really appreciate that. And this year, since the Overlook Room is under construction, we're having that. ORMC has graciously offered to host us this year. And we also had the Family Table Time Contest, which is still going on. And that's for families to eat together at least five times, and there are placemats online sponsored by Family Table Time. And you have discussions, and they draw pictures or write notes so that you can actually have a discussion about family, heritage, unity, teamwork. And then the family just takes a picture, and they can win a staycation here in Orlando. So we have our team members here today. We have Lynn Wickham and Sunny Shields from the Week of the Family Foundation. We have Scott Cookson from Sheffield Lohman, and also from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And we have Megan Crevier and Javon Aponte from Orange County Public Schools Parent Academy. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. And I have a proclamation on the Week of the Family. Whereas the city of Orlando supports the mission of Week of the Family, which is to strengthen family relationships through education, wholesome activities, fitness, and community service. And whereas the city of Orlando recognizes that strong families are vital to the diverse cultural and social fabric of Orlando, they're the foundation upon which our city is built and key to strengthening it. And whereas everyone has a role to play in making families successful, including neighborhood and community organizations, businesses, not-for-profits, faith institutions, policymakers, and families themselves. And whereas the city of Orlando recognizes that expressions of unconditional love and dedication sustain family members and support our communities. And whereas the Week of the Family celebration encourages us to reach new heights by strengthening relationships because families allow children to develop in force. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim November 5th through the 12th as the Week of the Family in the city of Orlando.
Just a few things. I was down for a conference in Miami, and there was about 40 mayors, and a number of them were from non-battleground states, so New Mexico and places like that. So they were surprised at the number of presidential campaign ads that were airing. They said their state has none. So we're so fortunate that we're a battleground state, we get to see all those great presidential commercials. And with that, the reason I bring that up is, early voting started today. So I would encourage you, if you're not going to be able to vote on Election Day... So I would encourage you, if you're not going to be able to vote on Election Day, or if you just find it convenient to go out and early vote, or you can still request an absentee ballot, or you can simply vote on Election Day. All right, the most important thing we're going to do today is celebrate Commissioner Gray's birthday, which is November the 6th. Commissioner, I hope you have a great birthday. Will you join me in singing happy birthday to Commissioner Gray?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Mr. Gray. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
You may not have heard, but Commissioner Gray said, "Sing loud," and that's because he's getting older and can't hear.
I can't hear. That's exactly right.
All right. Last week, I joined Commissioner Sheehan and several of our other commissioners in the Human Rights Campaign in Equality Florida and LGBTQ advocates to announce that the city has once again obtained the highest score of a perfect 100 on the HRC Foundation's 2016 Municipal Equality Index for the third year in a row. And it is a testament to our commitment on preserving an inclusive government that embraces diversity, and we should all be really proud of that. So thank you. Okay, following in that vein, being an exclusive city, we have hosted the annual Come Out with Pride events for a number of years. And this year's events were postponed due to Hurricane Matthew, and they have been rescheduled to Saturday, November 12th, at Lake Yola Park. The festival starts at 1:00. The parade is at 5:00. And Commissioner Sheehan and I will be joined by members of OPD, OFD, Pulse Survivors, Victims, Families, and to serve in the Community Pride Marshals Unit. I encourage everyone to come out for the event. We're anticipating well over 100,000 people. Also, earlier on that day, we will be having the 17th Annual Veterans Day Parade hosted by the Mayor's Veterans Advisory Council. That parade will be on Orange Avenue, and it starts at Robinson at 11 o'clock in downtown Orlando. This year's parade is recognizing the 15th anniversary of the September 11 terrorist attack, and I encourage you to spend all day long in downtown Orlando. You can come to the Veterans Parade and then stay for the Pride Parade. Be an interesting contrast, probably. Okay, I just have a couple of things that I want to highlight on the consent agenda. We have been ever focused on increasing pedestrian bicycle safety in our community. So on today's agenda, we will vote to approve $90,000 in funding towards those efforts and further our Best Foot Forward initiative. And since that was launched in 2012, the city has improved more than 160 crosswalks and enhanced pedestrian signs, pavement markings, and I think it has been a very good effort towards making pedestrians safer in the City of Orlando. And Amanda Day is here representing Best Foot Forward. Amanda, would you stand and be recognized, please? And then the only thing, other thing that I would mention at this point is we have moved our new business item up on the agenda, so it will be after the consent agenda and before the CRA. With that, I will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a number of items acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our commissioners an opportunity to comment items on the consent agenda, as well as update you on important happenings in their districts. We rotate the order that we do that. Commissioner Tony Ortiz is first up today.
Thank you, sir. Before I go on.
Were you at the Orlando Speaks last Wednesday? Okay, you weren't going to talk about that?
You can. It's in your district.
I wasn't there, but anyhow, I'll talk about it.
Oh, that's right, you weren't there, Commissioner. We hosted the fourth installment of our Orlando Speaks, which it brings OPD together with community folks from the community in an effort to make sure that we stay connected to the community, that OPD understands community needs, that community members have an opportunity to interact with our police department. It's one of the reasons I think that we continue to maintain that good, positive partnership between our neighborhoods and our OPD. I think it's good, but we continue to strive to work on that. Thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner Ortiz. And it was in Commissioner Ortiz's district.
It wasn't my district. And the reason I wasn't there is because I was doing something else somewhere else for the city. But let's start with our last Tuesday. We hosted the Coffee Corridor for Gateway Orlando at Park of the Americas, and we had approximately business, 20 business owners attending this particular meeting in the corridor. Very successful, a lot of exchange of ideas and plans for the near future. And the reason why I was not at that particular event last week was because I was in Colombia last week. I had a successful visit to Colombia, Medellin, Colombia, where I met with 21 members of their council, pretty small council, huh? In Medellin, 21 members, 21 councilmen. And talk about collaboration among both cities. We visited challenged areas of the cities, and I was shown how they use transportation as a key element to connect, just as we do with the terminal stations of the city train. I also gave a presentation about our Sun Rail and our ways of connectivity, and how convenient and accessible it is in the City of Orlando. We also met with International Cooperation, actually Cooperation Investment Agency of Medellin, an institution created to seek international cooperation. We spoke about economic development and investment, and future plans for both cities. Also last week, we had our Government Academy. I'd like to take this opportunity to give thanks to Mr. James Alfond, who was the presenter of the evening. We have close to 25 students this time around. We continue our mission to educate our constituents in the matters of government. And finally, we'd like to invite our city residents to our annual District Two Fall Festival that will take place this Friday, October 28th, at the Englewood Community Center, 6123 La Costa Drive, starting at 6:00 PM. Last year, we had approximately 2,000 people attending it, and it was a lot of fun. So if you're looking for a place to go and have a good time with the family, it's going to be the District Two Fall Festival. And one more thing before I go, in reference to that trip to Colombia, I want to thank F.J. Flynn, Claudia Brokoff, Thomas Chapman, Kelly Allen, and Ed Richter for helping me out, putting everything together for that trip. And from the Medellin team, Anna Maria Bustamante and Claudia Valles. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. We'll move to Commissioner Stewart, District Three.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you very much for indulging me a little bit today with the Rotary. We've been, I got involved in Rotary 30 years ago. This was our project. We thought we would knock this sucker out in no time flat, and found out that we're now 30 years into it and have this almost done. So I want to thank you. Also, I want to thank Commissioner Ing's wife, June, for, she's now, I think now going to be a new Rotary member, which is good to have. And of course, our next Rotary member will be Commissioner Jim Gray. Right, Jim?
Yes, sir.
I'd get 10 bucks if I were to ask you in public. That was the thing. A couple of quick things. This past weekend, I had a chance to go over and see Kidstown at the Orlando Science Center. It's part of the build-out that we helped fund. Commissioner, thank you very much for what y'all have done. This is a new 11,000-square-foot build-out. It is really, really neat. If you have a chance, take your kids or your grandkids over there. It's just joining play and science as part of that complete learning experience. This past weekend, I also had a chance to help place an historical marker over at the Cathedral Church of St. Luke. Cathedral Church is 135 years, who's calling you, Bob? Is 135 years old this week, and I just want to tell you how much we appreciate what they have done in our community. Also, thank yous to the Orlando Junior Academy for attending our Matthews Park Playground reopening, I guess. Thank you, Mayor, for being there. We had about 200 students from Orlando Junior Academy, a great chance to take advantage of the new park, and so I invite everybody to come and join the new park. And of course, this past weekend was Jazz Fest over in College Park, and we think we had about 10,000 people enjoy that. It's a great fundraiser and a great community builder. Some other quick updates, this Wednesday is the third and final Virginia Drive Corridor Study Meeting. It'll be at 6:30 at Lew Gardens, Wednesday night, the 26th. Saturday's a busy day. This Saturday, the Green Up will be assisting the Audubon Park Garden District at 9:00 to noon to work over there, meet at the church at Chelsea, the Covenant Church at Chelsea Street. Also, Making Strides for Rest Cancer Walk will be this weekend, of course. But Ivanhoe Village has set up a special emphasis to be there, to help be part of the supporting their Pink Tober Fest. I appreciate that. And then on the 29th, also is the College Park Community Center's Fall Fantasy Land. That's going to be from 3:00 to 6:00. Please come over and see what great things our community centers are doing. And then finally, the following Saturday is the 25th Annual College Park, I'm sorry, Sunday, the College Park Neighborhood Tour of Homes fundraiser for the College Park Neighborhood Association. So those are some things that are on the calendar and rest are on my website. In addition to that, let me, on the agenda today, let me mention to you Item B2. Mesa 21 will be taking over the old Gargi's contract. That's part of that today. Excited about having them come into Ivanhoe Village, it's going to be a real spark over there, and appreciate the work that Lori and our group have done to make that happen. So with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. District Four, Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm glad that we won that composting award, but I also want to point out that Mills 50 started that five years beforehand, and our own Richard Forbes is actually the person that sourced those and helped me sell those original composters out of the back of a semi truck. So again, Richie, imitation is the sincerest form of flattery. We actually started that in District Four. So again, I'm glad it went to be a citywide program, and it's just been an absolutely great, great thing for the city. We had our opening at Constitution Green Dog Park. Unfortunately, I had a little mishap with a St. Bernard puppy, so if you see me hobbling around on crutches, I did break my tibia, and I have a few things to recover from. So all I can say is when you try to run with the big dogs, be careful. I just want to thank the Solar Bears who had their opener, as well as the Orlando Magic that's happening, their season, that's having their season opener this week. They're doing salute to the victims of Pulse. And I just want to say that a lot of, I've seen a lot of change in our sports teams over the years in embracing the LGBT community. It used to be sports figures would say negative things about the gay community. And the fact that our sports teams have come so far and so, have been so supportive, and especially the Magic with helping raise money for the One Fund, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you. Orlando City Soccer's done a lot, and I just want to say, you know, this was a horrible tragedy, but to see, to show the world how our sports teams, how our entire community has rallied around the victims of the Pulse tragedy, a lot of the families actually went to the game and said that they were able to actually enjoy themselves a little bit. So again, I just want to shout out to the Solar Bears and Orlando Magic, and thank you, thank them so much for their support of the families, as well as with the fundraising for, to help the victims of Pulse. And just on the agenda today, Item C1 on Best Foot Forward, I'd just like to say, as someone who's hobbling around on crutches lately, I really noticed that people don't pay attention when they're turning right for pedestrians. So if we can add that in as part of our focus, that would be helpful, because I'm already on crutches, I don't want to be even worse shape. And I'm still trying to walk around a little bit. And on Item H2, we do have the FDLE grant, $316,000, to try to recoup some of our costs for the Pulse shooting. Again, a large, large financial responsibility to our city, just because of one vicious gunman, but we're trying to recoup as many of those as possible. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Five. Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to start off by thanking you for your support, along with Chris Castro and Green Works with that 200, and our community partners, especially Kay Rollins. When we approached her, she was all aboard, especially when it came to community gardens and making sure that our residents in District Five throughout all the community gardens we have can bring produce and actually supplement their income through community gardens. That is, that's huge. So thank you again, Chris, for your leadership in that. Excited about CRA4, which is the interlocal agreement with the second phase of D-PAC. Thank you, Kathy, and the Board of Trustees for your leadership. Also, yourself, Mayor and staff, and if Mayor Teresa Jacobs is listening at some point, we thank her, because it's very important. Kathy and myself was out a couple weeks ago to do a matchmaker for WMBEs for the second phase of the venues with the contractors that will be building it. And because of my predecessors' leadership and many of you on the council, by implementing Blueprint, this last phase of venues are going to be huge for the people of Paramore and small minority and women-owned businesses. You know, I know the mayor and the council will find another venue, but this is one of the last bites at the apple. So this one is especially important when we see the needle move here in the community and for residents. I'm excited about C7, which is approving the re-plot of Guardian Care, which is a nursing home, but this will be an ACLF that they're going to expand on there on the west side of Orlando. As we know, we're living longer now because of better healthcare and exercise. So with that, our seniors, as they transition, meaning me, into being a baby boomer, when we want to give up our homes, we'll have somewhere to transition to until we won't be a burden on our youth. Also, I'm excited about the D1, the $500,000 that council is hopefully going to approve today for the kids in Paramore, with the great work that's been done over at PKZ. And just knowing the stats, when we do the stats, we know that those monies are being well invested. We had 30 seniors last year, all 30 went to college, and success stories continue. I would like to thank the Legal Department under Amy Anackel's leadership, Lisa Early of the Recreation Department leadership, Lyft, and the citizens over in the Westlake community. We've been working together the last couple of years. As you know, we want to renovate Lake Yola, excuse me.
Larnedune.
Larnedune, we want to make Larnedune like Yola is. And I think the process has begun, and that was where, for perpetuity, the Elks Lodge was owning a building there that sits on Lake Larnedune. But the Boy Scouts of America, since 1954, had their scout meetings there. And through Amy and Lisa's leadership and many others, we were able to now place the Boy Scouts over at Beardale Park in Rock Lake. And through that, for the next 50 years, where they will have those facilities at no cost. And through that, we were able to regain ownership of that building there that sits on Lake Larnedune. And that was something that the community really wanted for the city to acquire that again. So I count that as a victory, a community victory, and thank you, everyone, for making sure that happened. And so on, 117, the city will now own the whole complete section there at that Lake Larnedune Park. So great things to come. F1 is housing, and that's a 500, and thank you, Oren and Linda, for your leadership in that. As far as $575,000, yes, $575,000 will be awarded to the Healthcare Center of Homeless Inc., but it's more than treating homeless, it's just the name of the incorporation. It'll be over in the Ivy Lake community, where we have at least 700 kids and single families there that sits in the Ivy Lane Home Apartments, which is a Section 8, hate to say project, but sub area, not subdivision, that don't have access to healthcare, that hasn't had access to healthcare in decades and decades. This community primary health center will have dental care, mental healthcare, they'll have pediatric care, and it will be for low and no income and moderate income. have pediatric care, and it will be for low and no income and moderate income families. So that is huge for that corner to where when we talk about walkability, that they'll be able to actually walk and receive services. And I do believe a healthy people makes a healthy community. So I'm excited and thank you all for that. On October 16th, I was able to go celebrate the 100th anniversary of Planned Parenthood, which operates a, a, their foundation over in District 5 with Ida and Anna Eskamati, which have access to preventive care services for women and men. They do give vasectomies over there, I found out. There wasn't, I didn't see too many men laughing.
No.
And then after that, on Wednesday, I traveled to Chicago with Lisa Early, Chief Judge Lawton, Brenda March, and Ray Sean Brown from our My Brothers Keeper along with Deputy Chief Rolone, in which we went and participated in an academy regarding city leadership to reduce overuse jails for youth and adults. We came back with some great strategies. We're going to be implementing a pilot program that Lisa Early is going to oversee and it will talk about public safety and how to reduce racial ethnic disparities when it comes to arrests, but also improving their lives. Hopefully, we'll try to duplicate similar to what we're doing on the supportive housing first piece where we'll target just a small area in my district where there's multiple arrests being done, but putting wraparound services in that household when we identify the, the young men or women that are having low to medium arrests. And after that, we came back on that 22nd along with Keep Orlando Beautiful, the Orlando Rescue Mission, Carter Street HOA, Larnedune HOA, and Spring Lake. And we did a community cleanup right around Lake Larnedune where we went into the community. And I cannot thank Mr. Fred Clayton, the CEO of Orlando Rescue Mission and his guys for over, 75 of them came out and just went through the community and picking up debris. We had over a truckload and going into the lake and picking up debris out of that lake, plastic and bottles. And that's not the first time that Orlando Rescue Mission has came to assist us, clean up the community. They have been great community stakeholders, those men, by going throughout District 5 and assisting us with enhancing residents' areas. So I thank Orlando Rescue Mission for all they do in my district. Upcoming events this Saturday, we'll also have a fall festival at Lizzie Rogers Park where we'll be having community resources, we'll be having live entertainment, food vendors and play areas for the youths. So come join us out there. Tonight, over at St. John, we'll be having a FAMU BCU Town Hall Information Service where we'll be talking about street closures during the Classic. We'll be talking about how to acquire proper, proper vendor license because we want everyone to have an opportunity when the Classic comes to town, but we do want you to be operating legally because I don't want to see anyone invest their funds there in the community and have to be shut down. So we'll be having all of our city department heads or representatives coming out to talk about how the community can participate in the upcoming Classic and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. We'll move to District 6, Commissioner Rains.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I attended on Wednesday, October 12th, the West Orange Chamber Mayor's Update Luncheon that was held in Ocoy at Ocoy's Lakeshore Center. And part of the panel, or the panel consisted of Mayor Teresa Jacobs of Orange County, mayors from Ocoy, Oakland, Windermere, and Winter Garden. It was a very informative meeting and thank you, Mayor, for your leadership and support and many of the things that we have accomplished here in Orlando. Then also, Mayor, I want to congratulate you on receiving the Dave's House Happy Days Sari Award that you and Linda Landman Gonzalez received there at Orlando Hilton Bonnet Creek on this past Friday, the 14th. And then also on the 19th, I attended the Harbor House Perpedore Breakfast that was held at Faith Hall at First Baptist Church and I read the proclamation from Mayor Dyer and brought greetings from the city of Orlando. And then also, a super milestone was achieved by Banco de Brasil as they celebrated their one-year anniversary in being the first bank that was built, not moved into a building, but was actually built on International Drive. So we congratulate Banco de Brasil for all of their efforts and their investment in our community. I also brought greetings on Saturday, October 22nd, to the Focus Brazil Orlando Event that was held at I Drive NASCAR there at Vanguard and Municipal Streets. This was a great opportunity because so many people from Brazil and throughout the United States attended this, this event. And on Saturday, the 22nd, I also attended the, the 19th Annual Dwali Mele that was held at the Disney Amphitheater there at Lake Yola. Lawman Prasad was the coordinator of the event and Mayor, I presented your proclamation on behalf of this event, plus read your letter and it was very well received. We have two upcoming events here. Thursday, October 27th, we're going to have the Greater Washington Shores Area Town Hall Meeting and the purpose of this meeting is to discuss crime, violence, guns, drugs, and safety in our neighborhoods. And we've invited several different guest speakers, Sheriff Jerry Demings, Orlando Police Chief John Mina, Orlando Fire Chief Roderick Williams, Orange County Corrections Chief Cornita Riley, State Attorney Jeff Ashton, and Public Defender Robert Wesley, and Florida Department of Juvenile Justice Melinda Wesley Nelson, and Attorney Aramis Ayala, who is the, probably the next state attorney in the Ninth Judicial Circuit, will be on hand. We expect to have so many different vendors there as well. These vendors are community organizations that are nonprofit organizations. They represent a lot of the solutions that we so look for to help build a strong community. And the next event that's coming up November 5th is the District 6 Veterans Parade and it's going to start at 10:00 AM. Parade begins at the Washington Shore Shopping Center and we will go west on Columbia Street to, to Bruton Boulevard and then south on Bruton Boulevard to Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church at 477 Prince Hall Boulevard. This is a legacy, a historical parade for a historical church and also a historical community. Promise Seeds Initiatives International is also sponsoring this event. Former State Representative Alzo Reddick, that's involved with the Soldiers to Scholars Program at UCF, is on hand and part of the planning team. And the Grand Marshal is Charles Foreman and Casman Flyers of Vitas is part of the committee and sponsor of this event as well. We're expecting so many of our community members and leaders to be out to assist us and this is the very first, the very first Veterans Day Parade in Washington Shore. So we are committing ourselves to doing even more towards assisting our veterans. And thank you, Mayor, and that's all that I have.
Thank you, Commissioner, and we'll move to District 1, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to all for the birthday wishes. And with that, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicates, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. All right, we are going to take, mentioned at the beginning of this meeting and at Agenda Review that we would hear the item on new business right after consent agenda, so we will reorder and bring the new business item up and then we will hear the CRA, which contains the same item, but we'll use the presentation that Chris and the D-PAC folks are going to give for both. So this community has long dreamed of a world-class performing arts center and I'm going to paraphrase Winston Churchill. He said something like, "Success can only be achieved through persistence and sustained effort." I think I'm pretty close on that quote, but I'm pulling it up. And I can think of no project that is a better example than persistence and sustained effort than our performing arts center. In the 80s, Mayor Frederick furthered that effort by purchasing most of the block east of the current City Hall. And then in the 90s, Mayor Hood furthered the effort in 1998. When I was in the Senate, Tony Jennings and I put in $15 million into the state budget for the effort that was being then led by UCF. So $15 million sat somehow securely in the state budget for about 15 years before it was finally used, but it was UCF money. In 2003, I asked Jim Pugh to lead a renewed effort to build a performing arts center and in about 2004, 2005, the community came together behind the notion that we ought to build three venues and become a world-class community in terms of the type of amenities that we have. So it was a performing arts center, the new Amway Center, and a new, what was now called Camping World Stadium. And in 2007, we entered into an interlocal agreement with Orange County to approve funding from both the CRA and the tourist development tax as well as private funding related to all three entities, some state funding from sales tax rebates, the UCF funding. So there ended up being about 11 different funding sources to build those three buildings and they were scheduled to come online, the Amway Center in 2010, the Citrus Bowl in 2011, and the Performing Arts Center in 2012. Well, the recession hit and we had to re-craft some of our plans. D-PAC went back to the drawing board and said, "We'll figure out a way to build two of the three theaters with the money that we had," and we moved forward and were successful in opening that venue in 2014 and the Citrus Bowl reopened about the same time. So we successfully, by 2014, after 11 years, had three of the buildings mostly finished, but the Performing Arts Center is not finished. And now we're going to have that opportunity to build that third hall, which will be largely for the ballet and then Philharmonic and certainly community groups. But I am extremely proud of how our community and the Dr. Phillips Center organization as well as the city and the county and the tourism community have all continued to persist in the dream of completing that performing arts center. And when things are worth doing, they're worth sustaining that effort to get that done. So before us is an interlocal agreement that would add an additional $45 million from tourist development tax to plug the remaining gap. There's a little bit more private money to be raised, but largely that will finish off the financial plan. So it's moving $20 million that had been committed to the soccer stadium, which is now being privately funded, and another $25 million on top of that. We have agreement with Orange County to move that forward. We'll be taking that up today, they will be taking it up a week from Tuesday, and then hopefully we'll have a groundbreaking in January. So Chris, would you lead us off here?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioner. The item on your agenda today is the second amended and restated community venues interlocal. It has a really long name, but it really is actually a fairly simple amendment to the community venues interlocal. First, it adds an additional $45 million, as the mayor mentioned, of tourist development tax funding for the arts center to complete the second stage. And the second stage includes the Steinmetz Hall, which is the acoustical hall, and some other improvements that Kathy will tell you more about later.
Who's operating the slide presentation? I don't know if you're doing that, Chris.
Got it. Second, the amendment deletes the $20 million funding for the soccer stadiums, as the mayor mentioned. Soccer team will privately own that stadium now, which makes it ineligible for TDT funding. So the $20 million from soccer will be reallocated to the arts center and there'll be an additional $25 million funded at the arts center as well. There's no additional funding from the city or the CRA as part of this amendment. This chart on your screen now shows a history of the first through fifth cent TDT funding for the arts center. The original 2007 interlocal provided for $130 million TDT funding. There was an amendment that was adopted in 2012, which added some additional funds to offset cost escalation and that was due to the construction delays from the Great Recession, also as the mayor mentioned. The interlocal was amended again in 2013 to provide an additional $25 million and the amendment today provides 45 million more for a total TDT allocation of 207.4 million. The, one thing to note, the interlocal agreement also provided funding from this revenue stream for the Citrus Bowl and it also provided revenue for the Amway Center, but those are separate issues, so I'm not, my presentation doesn't touch on those today. Okay. The interlocal agreement also provided some funding commitments from other funding partners, including the city, the city CRA, and the state. This table, table shows the funding sources for the construction of both stages of the arts center. Kathy will discuss this further in her presentation, but you'll see the Stage 2 projected costs for finishing up the Dr. Phillips Center is 203.5 million dollars. Funding sources consisted of almost $100 million of philanthropy from the arts center. That does not include over $37 million of philanthropy that was raised for pre-construction project delivery. There were a lot of years of hard work by the staff to get to the point where pre-construction began that was funded through philanthropy, so that is not included on here. The city contributed 59 million largely in the form of contributed land and funding that will be repaid with the redevelopment of the Creative Village site. The state of Florida, through the University of Central Florida, provided 20 million and the city of Warner Park's providing a million dollars as well. And the city's CRA provided 129 million dollars. And all of the city's funding went into the first stage of the arts center. So for the second stage of the arts center, there's really only two funding sources. It's the additional D-PAC philanthropy, Dr. Phillips Center philanthropy, and tourist development taxes. We also had, interest earnings actually provided almost $18 million towards the project, so that, that, that helped as well. So combined funding for the arts center of almost $533 million. One thing to make you aware of on a separate but related note, Orange County has announced plans to pay off the city's contract tourist development tax bonds early. The Board of County Commissioners is expected to consider a bond resolution on November 1st, which would repay all the city's outstanding first through fifth cent bonds and provide the remaining funding that's authorized under the interlocal for the arts center. This, there's a couple of reasons why they would want to do that. Largely, it releases them from the obligation to send us the annual payment of first through fifth cent TDT bonds, which would allow them to fund additional tourism improvements, other, other items that they, that the county's interested in funding that would benefit the tourism community and the community at large. On the city's side, that will reduce the city's debt levels. So even though these contract tourist development tax bonds are repaid with TDT revenues, it still adds to the city's overall outstanding debt amount, so to the extent we can limit that, that's, that's good for the city. And then it also eliminates a very small risk of a significant and sustained downturn in TDT revenues that takes that off the table as well. So this is good for the city and good for the county. And just one final note, that it does not impact the city's sixth cent TDT bonds. Those were issued in 2008 to fund some of the funding for the Amway Center. Those six cent bonds will continue to be outstanding even if the county decides to pay off the county's, the city's first through fifth cent bonds. And that brings us to the request of action, which will be approval of the second amended and restated community vendors interlocal agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions after Kathy. I'm happy to answer any questions after Kathy does her presentation. I'll stick around. Kathy?
I'm on.
Second.
Motion in a second. Kathy's still going to give a presentation.
I don't have to.
No. You know what? Sometimes we don't celebrate enough significant happening, so it's a significant day, even though we know the outcome of the vote, so let's talk about it a little bit.
Oh, great, thank you. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On behalf of our Board of Directors, many here today, our donors and our staff, thank you for the years of support and your consideration for today. And I agree with you, Mayor, the persistence of not only the leadership at the elected level, but our volunteers and our donors and our board members have been remarkable. Today, I'm going to just do a brief presentation that is going to touch base on our operations and then just remind you of the components of Phase Two. When we set out to do this in 2003, actually, in this council chambers, we talked about what should the arts center actually be. It wasn't necessarily so much about the building. I don't know if you remember, we actually knew what the arts center was going to look like. The designs were done for almost a year and a half, and we chose not to show it to anybody because it was never supposed to be about the building. It was supposed to be about the purpose. And we came up with four goals that we really heard and resonate from the community. One, we wanted a place that there was going to be participation. We know that it needed to be a destination, not only for the people that live here, but the people that visit. We want it to be a place to educate from two to a hundred and two, with lots of different programs. And then, of course, we wanted a place for people to gather and to celebrate. And so, I want to show you just a quick video that captures the past twenty months. So, the components that we've been operating for the past twenty-three months consist of the Walt Disney Theater, the Florida Hospital School of Arts, the Jim and Alexis Pugh Theater, the DeVos Family Room, and the Center of Arts Plaza. That was what was considered Phase One. In those components, and this was at the end of our fiscal year, we did, in twenty months, we did five hundred and seventy-three ticketed performances, and you can see what we're trying to show you here is diversity in programming, so we can attract as many audiences as possible to the center, and really expose the arts and just being together in the spaces that we have. We also, in twenty months, did five hundred and nine non-ticketed events. These are gathering events for, you can see, the service industry, banking industry, media, consumer goods, hospitality, nonprofit, and just events on the plaza, placemaking. Our fiscal year in 2014, 15, our very first year, we were open, I think, nine months, eight to nine months, I think, eight months of actual ticketed events. A hundred and thirty percent, we were favorable to budget. Our fiscal year this past year, second year's a tougher year, but we're still thirty-eight percent favorable to budget. To give you an idea where we were when our planning, not knowing really how to compare this center to any place, the performer that we worked off, that we presented here when we did our interlocal and our agreement, we're a hundred and fifty-one percent favorable to what the performer was in 2009. And then, for this year, we're sixty-two percent ahead of the game. So, we're going to continue to operate the building as best we can, earning as much revenue as possible. Phase Two actually consists of Steinmetz Hall, and also, we have a brand-new gift of totaling five million dollars. There is a rehearsal space behind Steinmetz Hall. It's a very, very large rehearsal space. It's almost four to five times larger than our small rehearsal space. And Joyce &amp; Judson Green gave us a gift to really turn this into a performance venue club, and actually, a kind of a music lab. And it's well-suited for that, very focused on both music and dance. Anticipated programming for Steinmetz Hall, again, as you heard from Chris and from the mayor, this is the hall that's really a jewel for our local arts organization, and it's also attracting attention already, when the shovel goes in the ground, from international work. So, it's going to be a great balance where the priorities for our local arts organizations, but the size of the hall and the quality of the hall is exceptional, just like the two halls that are over there right now, Pugh and Disney. So, you can see the variety of music there. Oops, oops. And here's a short, quick video of the transition of the space. So, it becomes a true concert hall, and then it has a flat floor for both performance, dance, and non-ticketed events. Again, in the small, the green room, this is a place for cabaret. It's really anticipating something very similar, if you've been to Jazz at Lincoln Center, Dizzy's at Columbus Circle. We have a partnership that we're developing with Jazz at Lincoln Center, and the collaboration with them has really driven how this room can, we can bring it up to music standards for today. Phase Two construction, Chris touched base on this, but you can see how the funding breaks down for sources and uses for Phase Two. At the very top, you can see for this phase, our, the center's contribution is fifty-one million, three hundred thousand, roughly. We still have a bit to go. Our construction costs will be in in December, and we'll know the exact amount. You can see the additional highlighted forty-five million, which is part of today's agenda item, totaling two hundred and three point five million. Total project costs, again, Chris touched base on this, is five hundred and thirty-two point seven, and you can see that the arts center, with our pre-opening, the fundraising, the studies, the operational needs, pre-construction, and pre-opening, we have contributed another thirty-seven six. The total project cost is five hundred and seventy million. Right now, we've raised over a hundred and sixty million to date, and we believe that we're probably going to need to raise another ten million before we break ground, which is anticipated in January, and we're going to get it done. So, the phase, just to tell you what's happening, once the approval of today and at the county next week, the bids are out, bids are going to be in in fourth quarter, and we're putting our financing together right now. And I think at December 23rd is when we're going to have, the general contractor will have locked in their GMP, of which we'd like to bring. Here, it says January 9th, but I think we might ask for a couple-week extension on that, for you to approve the GMP, which happens here, and then we'll break ground immediately afterwards. It is a three-year construction schedule. It's a very complicated building, just like Phase One, and it'll take a full thirty-six months. We'd like to push them to thirty-four months if we can, but I think it's probably going to be on thirty-six months. So, thank you for your consideration, and Chris and I are here to answer any questions.
Okay, questions with Kathy or Chris? Mr. Gray?
Yeah, hi. Kathy, thank you very much. Favorable to budget, help me with favorable, hopefully, to profitability. What do the operations look like over the last couple of years, as far as profitability? And the second part is, as we add Phase Two, will that improve profitability, or do you expect that to take a little hit at first?
The, well, there's, in terms of favorable to budget, was this, we actually, the first several years of operations, we actually prefunded the unknown for us, just to kind of get us, kind of even out the operations. Our first year, we didn't touch any of the pre-opening. I think we became favorable to budget, basically earning, I think, four to five hundred. I'm not sure if they were, fell out, four to four hundred? Yeah, between four and five hundred. The second year, tougher year, we actually were favorable to budget. We actually used some of our pre-opening, and we were favorable to budget. I think we're ending up around seven, six, seven, hundred?
Percent-wise.
No? Percentage-wise? Oh, percentage-wise, yeah. So, we saw the percentage, thirty-nine percent favorable to budget. So, we're, we did use some of the pre-opening, but not as much as we thought we would. So, that's why we're favorable to budget. The first year, we actually made money. When you run an arts center, you earn it, and then you also have contributed. So, we are always going to be dependent and need to have fundraising. One, because we do so many things that are free for the community, and we have the ability to sponsor things to offset costs. So, between foundation gifts and between just general contributions or membership, you balance your budget through earned income and contributed income. Right now, we're about eighty-two percent, between eighty and eighty-two percent, earned income versus contributed income. Most arts centers are right around sixty percent. So, across the country, we're actually operating the arts center on more favorable earned income perspective.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, when Phase Two opens, yes, there is going to be, again, as we get closer, we'll be working closely with the arts organizations. We have other emerging arts organizations. The goal is to keep their rents and their ability to work in the center affordable. And what we said when we started, we weren't going to be the most expensive in the state of Florida or the least expensive. We were trying to get the arts organizations into a track where they can afford, to the level of their organizational ability to be in the center, and we're working on that right now. A lot of that was going to be supportive of the pre-commercial development on the front piece of property to help us offset those costs, and we're still working through those contributions.
Perfect. Thank you.
Further questions? Kathy, discussion. There was a motion by Commissioner Hill and a second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Congratulations.
All right.
Okay, I want that same level enthusiasm for the CRA, which has the same retake. Without objection, we will recess the city council meeting, and we will convene the CRA meeting, and we're going to go ahead and move to item number four. And, Madam Clerk, what I would like to do is adopt the same presentation that was just made before the city council as part of the minutes for the CRA meeting.
Yes, sir.
And I would adopt or ask for a motion on item number four.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second by Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And so, the motion carries in the CRA. You guys can be excused to go celebrate. Thank you, guys. Thomas, you have a couple more items.
They're all just minutes, aren't they?
Are they?
Yeah.
Just minutes.
Okay. I think I can handle that all by myself. All right, number one is meeting minutes from the advisory board, August 24th.
Second.
Motion is second, Hill and Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two is CRA, meeting minutes from the September 15th meeting.
Second.
Motion and second, Hill, Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three is CRA, meeting minutes.
Move.
September 26th. Motion Stewart, second Hill.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Walter, any further business come before the CRA? Then we will stand adjourned, and we will reconvene the city council meeting. We don't have NID or OPEB, so that brings us to hearings. Number one, the Starwood Development. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the new business item? I'm sorry, of the hearings item.
Mayor, this is the second of two required public hearings to approve the recommended Starwood Development Agreement.
Okay, you recall that we did have a hearing where we did not take a vote. I think it was at the very last meeting, so is there a motion on the Starwood Development Agreement?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Ortiz, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to be heard on this matter? Then I will close the hearing part of this. Commissioner Gray, comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just quickly wanted to give some thanks. I mean, you cannot plan a twenty-five-hundred-acre development with a lot of, without a lot of give and take. The two developers are here, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Clark. I want to thank them. I certainly took my bite, wanting a public park, and they accommodated, and I think the school board wanted to take a bite and get a school. But the point is, like a lot of our landowners in District One, they're long-term focused, they want to do the right thing. So, thanks to them, but also, thanks to our staff for being part of that negotiating process, the give and take. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
And Commissioner Gray, we appreciate your involvement and diligence in making sure that this got done in the right manner. So, thank you for your work. All right, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we are on hearings and ordinances, first reading, Madam Clerk, number one.
Ordinance 2016-68, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, relating to zoning districts and uses, admitting provisions of land development code to clarify district regulations and allowable use tables, deleting regulations relating to design, communities, cluster developments, and average lot development, providing technical, grammatical, and organizational amendments, providing legislative findings for separability, codification, correction of script errors, and ineffective dates.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Eng, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing now, and all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Commissioners, this ordinance would change the list of permitted land uses in some of our zoning districts, and is being initiated by the city. State law requires that we hold two advertised public hearings, with one of those hearings being held after five o'clock, unless by a supermajority vote, we decide to hold the next hearing at our normal meeting time of two o'clock. Staff recommends that we hold our next hearing at our regular meeting time. Do we have such a motion? So, move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Eng, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so we will hear this at our regularly scheduled meeting. All right, Madam Clerk, you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Hearings, ordinances, second read, number one.
Ordinance 2016-78, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, relating to historic preservation, designating certain real property generally located north of East Central Boulevard, east of Lake Eola, south of East Washington Street, and west of North Eola Drive, comprised of Street, and west of North Eola Drive, comprised of point-three acres of land, more or less, addressed as five-twelve East Washington Street, as an Orlando historic landmark, providing findings, permit disclaimer for severability, correction of scrutinous errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two?
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash seventy-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to the Greenway Improvement District, granting a petition to amend the boundaries of the Greenway Improvement District as initiated by the district's Board of Supervisors, admitting ordinance number zero eight zero five one nine one zero zero one to expand the district by approximately four point six acres, the district being generally located north of the Osceola County border, east of Boggy Creek Road, south of the central Florida Greenway State Road four seventeen, and west of Narcisse Road, providing for severability, correction of scrutinous errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Sorry, I'm eating a small candy bar.
Fun-size bar? I move to adopt.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk?
You have to share when I'm done, Mayor.
This is like Jim Gray Day.
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash seventy-six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to the Boggy Creek Improvement District, granting a petition to amend the boundaries of Boggy Creek Improvement District as initiated by the district's Board of Supervisors, admitting ordinance number zero eight zero five one nine one zero zero two to expand the district by approximately forty-one acres, the district being generally located north of the Osceola County border, east of Boggy Creek Road, south of Orlando International Airport, and west of Narcisse Road, providing for severability, correction of scrutinous errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Almost had Commissioner Eng's.
We sound alike.
It does. So, is there anyone that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash thirty-five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located east of Narcisse Road, south of Kirby Smith Road, and west of Lake Whipper Will, and comprised of forty-eight point seven eight acres of land, more or less, as the planned development district on the city's official zoning maps, providing a development plan, a trip equivalency matrix, and a special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for amendment of the city's official zoning maps, providing a disclaimer, providing for severability, correction of scrutinous errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash thirty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city's certain land, land generally located east of Narcisse Road, south of Kirby Smith Road, and west of Lake Whipper Will, and comprised of forty-eight point seven eight acres of land, more or less, admitting the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as urban village in part and conservation in part on the city's official future land use maps, establishing a sub-area, a new sub-area policy for the same property to provide a maximum development program, required land development regulations, and inclusion in the southeast Orlando sector plan, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use maps, providing for a lot split application, providing for consent to the municipal services taxing unit for Lake Whipper Will, providing for severability, correction of scrutinous errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And the last one, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash eighty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located south of State Road five twenty-eight, east of State Roads four seventeen, and north of Weehawhootie Road, and comprised of two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight point six-three acres of land, more or less, designating the property as the planned development district on the city's official zoning maps, providing for a development plan, phasing plan, a trip equivalency matrix, roadway, cross-sections, and special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrutinous errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. You done, Commissioner Gray?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go to ordinances on first read.
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash seventy-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located north of East Concord Street, east of North Magnolia Avenue, south of Hillcrest Street, and west of Highland Avenue, comprised of point-six-six acres of land, more or less, from the oh-one office and residential district with a traditional city overlay in part, and the oh-two office and residential district with a traditional city overlay in part, to the planned development district with a traditional city overlay district, providing a development plan and special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrutinous errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Eng. Is there anyone from the public that would testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash eighty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, admitting the city's growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for certain land generally located south of Old Winter Garden Road, west of Ivy Lane, and north of Teresa Boulevard, comprised of two point five-nine acres of land, more or less, from industrial to office low intensity, changing the property's zoning designation from the general industrial district in part and the industrial commercial district in part to the low-intensity office residential district, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrutinous errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
So move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, number three, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash eighty-four, an ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida, admitting the city's adopted growth management plan by updating figure CI fourteen to be entitled City of Orlando, twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one Capital Improvement Element, Capital Improvements Fund Schedule, admitting policy two point two point thirty in the Capital Improvements Element, providing for severability and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Eng, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash seventy-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city's certain land generally located to the north of West Colonial Drive, east and south of Fair Villa Road, and west of Mercy Drive, and comprised of one point three-three acres of land, more or less, admitting the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as industrial on the city's official future land use maps, designating the property as industrial general district along with the Wakava overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrutinous errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. I would point out that there are a number of items that are contained for your information only and do not require a vote. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council.
Mayor, just before, just before we do that.
Commissioner Eng?
I just wanted to say on item number six of the information only, the withdrawal of the Majorca Annexation Ordinance.
Yep.
Number twenty sixteen fifty-three, that I really wanted to thank staff, Kyle Shepherd, and all of those that were really involved in this, and so there was a change in the direction of the developer, and we're just happy for them that they got what they're looking for.
And thank you for working on that in District Six, or could've been in District Six, adjacent to District Six.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question, just on a matter of procedure? Didn't we actually vote on that annexation under consent agenda? Do we have to actually vote to un, to not, to?
I don't, it was an ordinance, and I'm not even sure that we voted on first read.
I thought we had a vote to accept their application. Do we have to have a vote to acknowledge that?
No.
Mayor, no, no, you don't have to.
Because they're withdrawing it?
Because they've withdrawn it, that's right. And keep in mind, this was not a voluntary annexation where you've accepted their petition, so there's not, no further action. We put this on for information only, just so you knew what happened to it.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have one request for general appearance, and that is from, I'm gonna hopefully get the last name right, but it is Mark Waco, Wacoak? Koviak. Close. Thanks.